All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Carter Tony's declaration of emergency dated March 15, 2020. This meeting of the City Council will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Now, please rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, let's begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this City Council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is roll call, Councilor Niedergang.
Here.
Councilor White.
Here.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Here.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Strezzo.
Present.
Councilor Klingon.
Present.
Councilor Mba.
Present.
Councilor Scott.
Present.
Councilor Rosetti.
Present.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, all 11 councilors are present. We have a quorum.
All right, do we have any moments of silence? I see Council Ballantyne and Council Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remember the 59 Somerville residents who have died of COVID since the beginning of this pandemic. They were the sons, the daughters, the mothers and fathers, our neighbors and friends in our community, and express my heartfelt condolences to their family and friends who miss them.
Council Ewan Campen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have two remembrances tonight. I am incredibly sad to say that Eric Hook passed away last week at the age of 55. Eric was diagnosed with stage IV cancer in November of last year. He passed away on January 21. I know that many of my colleagues and many, many Somerville residents knew Eric and his family, and we are deeply, deeply saddened to learn of Eric's passing. Eric and his wife Allison, their family live on Richdale Street, and one of the many ways you may have interacted was through the Winter Hill Neighborhood Association, the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association. And when I first learned of Eric's passing last week, I went through my email box and looked at some of the messages that he sent to the City Council on, you know, various neighborhood issues over the last few years, and in every single message, the thing that really just jumps off the page is that this is someone who was just a genuinely kind, thoughtful, a wonderful, caring person, and just an absolute gentleman. He was someone who really cared deeply about his community, the neighborhood, and his friends. The news is still very fresh. Over the past week, there have been some really moving memories and thoughts about Eric pouring out from friends, from neighbors, from family, being posted on Facebook and on a site that the family set up. I'm incredibly thankful that I was able to interact with Eric a little bit over the last few years in my role as a City Councilor, and I ask that we keep him in our thoughts along with his family tonight.
Council Klingon would like to sign on to the three moments of silence. Are there any further moments of silence?
Yes, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot you had one more. I apologize.
Of course. I'd also like tonight to remember Robert Louis Wagner, who went by Bob, who was born in 1930 and passed away at the age of 90. Mr. Wagner is not someone that I was able to meet myself, but I know a lot of his relatives who live in Somerville, several in Ward 3, and my colleagues may know some members of the Wayland families and the Tomorrow families who are very active in Somerville. I corresponded with one of his daughters, Kim Tomorrow, of Lowell Street, and I asked her how she'd like for him to be remembered tonight, and she wrote me, "He was a true Somervillian, born at home at 245 Summer Street on the corner of Summer Street and Linden Ave. He was a graduate of Somerville High School, class of 1948, and a proud member of the Somerville Community Baptist Church, a veteran of the Korean War in the Division of the Army, and a member of Post 19. He led a long life and leaves behind many relatives in Somerville and beyond, and I ask that we remember him tonight." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have Councilor Niedergang and Ballantyne would like to sign on to Eric Cooks, and then Council of Ba would like to sign on as well. Any further moments of silence? I do have a quick moment of silence for the currently unknown individual who passed away at the East End Grill Restaurant, which is currently vacant. Person, homeless person down on their luck, who was getting resources from the city, unfortunately passed away in that building, and we don't know the person's name, but it is a reminder that despite our best efforts, there are still a lot of people struggling, and that we have to keep working hard to make sure that people are being taken care of. So please, everyone, please rise for a moment of silence. And Councilor Rosetti would like to sign on to the moment of silence. All right, next item, and Council Klingon as well. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, item number three is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 17.
This item is laid on the table for approval. Council Ballantyne would like to sign on for the last moment of silence as well. Before we move on, there is one item to take out of order today, item number seven. We'll take that item up after the grant of location unless there's any objections from the council. Here in none, Council Rosetti will move to take item number seven out of order after we do item number four. So, Mr. Clerk, please read item number four.
Item number four is a public hearing on a grant of location application submitted by Eversource to install 1,520 feet of conduit, five duct banks, and one new manhole in Somerville Ave, running from a manhole at Prospect Street down to a manhole at Medford Street.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? There's a little hand icon you can press, and let me find Jackie Duffy if she's there. I don't see. Oh, there's a different one. Jackie, you're here to speak on this one? There you go. You are unmuted.
How are you? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. How you doing?
Good, thank you. We'd like to put in this conduit in the manhole to supply power to Boynton Yards and Union Square. We've worked everything out with the DPW, and everything seems to be in order.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the little hand icon. Going once. Going twice. Up, here we go. George Kazani. George, you are unmuted.
Can you hear us?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Are we going to go over when this is going to start, how long it's going to take, and what the plan is, or is this the time to ask about that?
Up, this is a fair question to ask. Jackie, do you have any answers to that?
Yes, we want to start as soon as possible, probably next week, weather permitting.
Okay, so is the whole street going to be shut down?
Jackie?
No, not the whole street, not all at once.
So there's going to be able, like, traffic is going to be able to go back and forth, right? It's just going to...
Yes, the police will set up the details. The details will set up the road restrictions. I'm sorry.
Okay, and is it going to be on both sides of the road, in the middle of the road?
No, it just looks, it'll be on one side of the road.
Okay, and which side would that be on? Is it on the police station side or the other side?
Hold on one second.
No, right? Because if not, it's on your side.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
I'm just trying to. It's on the side over where the, on the police station side, sorry, where the flower places...
The flower shop, you know it?
Yeah.
Where is the flower shop here?
Near Prospect?
Okay, yes, I got it.
Near Prospect, yeah.
Okay, that's the idea.
Okay. Okay, I think you answered all our questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. You can just call me if you have any questions.
Yeah, we were just a little bit concerned because we own the body, the auto body shop, so there's been a lot of construction going on, so we just wanted to know more information, we just wanted to know more information and stuff. So thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any more public comment? Please use the hand icon. All right, seeing no further comment, I now declare this public hearing closed. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is in coordination with the Somerville Ave utility and streetscape work. This, all this duct banking is near, mostly overlapping where the large conduit has already been placed in the ground here. I just wanted to ask quickly with Ms. Duffy if she's coordinating with the, with our engineering and construction team on this, and if these are, are these duct banks integrated into the, into the large underground conduit that we've been putting in, or is this a separate set that is getting installed?
I'm going to have Matt Vains come on. Matt McLaughlin, can you see him in the audience?
I see him. Matthew, great first name.
Will anybody get to this better?
Yeah, hi, how are you? My name is Matt Vains. I'm the construction manager for Eversource, so I believe what you're talking about is a concrete culvert Barletta's been working on. So we've met with Barletta, the DPW, and the DPW engineering team pretty much once a week now, so we've coordinated our duct bank installation to kind of accommodate one another, our paths, you know, so they can coexist. Their, a portion of this is going to be on top of the culvert. The culvert is all these green boxes that you see on the screen. The pink path is our duct bank path. That's been, we've test pitted and made some revisions based on the DPW and their comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, and hopefully we can get done quick and not cause any delays to the project. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
That's the plan.
I would ask that be approved this evening.
All right, any further discussion? Here in none, Council Scott moves for approval. This item is laid on the table for approval. Now we'll do item number seven.
Mr. President, item number seven is a report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, which met on January 20.
All right, so due to a personal conflict of interest, I have to recuse myself from this item. So Council Rosetti is both the chair and the president right now, so Council Rosetti, you have the floor.
Mr. President, before you leave, how would you like us to notify you to re-enter the room?
If someone could shoot me a text, that'd be great.
Okay, will do. Thank you, sir. I would like to report this committee meeting in which all members of the committee, or all five members assigned to the committee, were present. Also joining us from staff was Ellen Collins of Personnel, Chief, Acting Chief Charles Feminow for the Police Department, and Deputy Chief Carabino, and Jim Stanford. Also, we had with us from Somerstat, Mike Masturboni from our Law Department, Assistant Solicitor Hannah Papenheim, and Kushbu Weber, the Director of Governmental Affairs of the Mayor's Office, as well as our Legislative Liaison from the Mayor's Office, Lauren Rankinello, two clerks that evening, Kim Wells and Peter Force Elise. I will be going into detail of this committee report. Normally, I remind everybody, it's online, much more extensively online than what I will be highlighting. There were multiple attachments, documents you'll find attached to this report. I did explain to the committee at the start of the meeting that I had been in direct contact multiple times with the administration, and as a result, I made the decision that the candidates would not be interviewed tonight. We were going to be interviewing candidates to go to the, potentially be assigned to the reserve police officer list. Instead, I made that decision not to go forward with the interviews, rather that I wanted to allow discussion with city staff and the committee to clear up some questions regarding the appointing of these potential officers. I asked about, to Ms. Collins, about the updated increase for the number of vacancies through the state's listing and the testing, and why it was increased from 10 to 16, and the dates and timelines of that. I also asked Ms. Collins about the status of the city's hiring the Racial and Social Justice Director, and was informed at that time that there were six candidates for the position, and interviews were in the process of being scheduled. Council Scott asked if the reserve list presented to the committee this evening was the December 4, 2019, original list of 10 candidates, or the January 2020 expanded list of 16 candidates. There were also numerous bypasses and a number of withdrawals for this application process. Four appeals after decision by the city staff, four appeals had been filed. To date, one had been decided that attachment is to this report. The other three are still decisions, not been made yet. In June of 2020, the Police Department's staffing level was 88. Chief Feminow reported that the current staffing level was down to 85 due to three retirements. Asked who made the request to expand the list to 16, Ms. Collins said the request was made by former Chief Fallon. I noted that 12 candidates received bypass letters, and that I had asked to see them, but the council was informed they weren't permitted to view the bypass letters. We were, however, provided the civil service decision on the challenge. Excuse me, I can't even read my own handwriting. Of the four bypasses, appeals filed, three are still waiting decision. My apologies to you all. Council Scott stated that the City Council had previously asked that the reserve list be eliminated, noting that under civil service, the city must state the number of vacancies to be filled, but that requirement does not apply to a reserve list. He believes that using a discretionary number can lead to manipulation of the reserve list in order to get to particular individuals on that list. He referenced a passage from the civil service decision in the case of O'Donnell versus the City of Somerville. That reference is noted here in the report. Council Scott did say that the city's active defense of the three remaining bypass appeals and its continued use of a reserve list was troubling. Chief Feminow stated that if the city doesn't fill the positions by March, the police academy slots being held for them, which is coming soon, would be given to another city or town, and Somerville might have to wait until May for the next class. I spoke to the fiscal year 21 budget process last June, where there was, of course, a lot of discussion around the Police Department's budget, and the decision at that time was made to provide funds for six officers at only one month's salary, as well as adding a RSJ director's position to the budget. Those six positions were vacant at that time, and the council voted for them to remain so until further needed dialogue with the community. To date, that RSJ position has not been filled. I discussed with my colleagues on the committee that I would instead prefer to fill the three vacancies created through retirements now and wait on the others until it's known how the police is going to be reimagined. Chief Feminow did mention that within the next 40 days, he anticipated there would be three more retirements. He stated that the operational needs are causing some officers to work 16 hours at a time, putting a strain on them and the department. Council Strezzo asked about the Department's Family Services Division. That division is normally staffed by three to four officers who are mandated to have special training. However, there are currently two officers in that unit at this time. One position has been vacant for a year and the other for three months. The chief told the committee that although property damage is down, gun violence is on the rise. Council Mba questioned if, noted that if the city had extra money, it should be used instead to solve housing crisis and the pandemic-driven economic devastation on families and small businesses. He went on to say that the focus should be on the immediate human needs of the community, which disproportionately impact people of color. Council Ba asked about any plans for a civilian rapid response unit. Ms. Weber replied that the mayor is committed to moving forward on this, and the Police Department is committed to progressing the policy of revamping how emergencies are responded to. She referenced a letter sent to the City Council that very day of the committee meeting, which was asking for additional staffing for the RSJ department. I asked Chief Feminow to provide data showing a rise in crime, et cetera, to support the need for adding officers to his department. We also referenced Council Ballantyne's Order Number 211175, which was presented by her at the February 1 meeting, which, excuse me, will be on the agenda at the February 1 meeting of the Public Health and Public Safety Committee meeting. I asked Chief Feminow to have requested data ready for that meeting. She had asked the committee to think about considering, excuse me, I asked the committee to think about considering three police appointments at the February 2 confirmation of appointment meeting for interview if Council Ballantyne's order was dealt with on February 1 by the Public Health and Public Safety Committee. Council Scott agreed with Council Mba about not being comfortable with hiring at this time. Council Strezzo then read a letter from several people of color in support of hiring new officers, and she referenced a section of that letter which is noted here in this report. Council Strenzo stated that she would vote to add three to five officers at this time. Council Klingon said he would support filling the three retirees' positions. I clarified that I was suggesting filling only the three recently vacated retirees' positions based on budget discussions. Council Scott commented on a letter from Defund SPD saying that every dollar spent on police is a dollar not going to other areas of need. Ms. Weber clarified the vacancies in the Police Department, explaining that there are three vacancies now, and that two of the next three vacancies will occur by February 1, not the 40 days that the chief had referenced earlier. I asked that paperwork be submitted to the council confirming those two retirements by February 1. I then made a motion to interview the top three candidates from the civil service list to potentially fill the three current vacancies created by retirements in the Police Department. The motion passed on a roll call vote with three in favor, Klingon, Strezzo, and Rosetti, two against, Mba and Scott. No one was absent. I asked that Council Klingon, as an assigned member to the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety, be prepared to report back to the committee on our February 2 meeting, the happenings of the February 1 meeting. I submit this report as presented, and if accepted, I do want to, before I open it up, if I open up any line of questioning, I do have updates since this meeting on some of the questions from this report, but at this time, I submit this report as, ask for acceptance of the report. Now, with President McLaughlin having been recused, I am reminded that the Public Health and Public Safety meeting has been changed. It will be a meeting of the whole. Is there any discussion on the report as presented? Council Niedergang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, I just want to thank you and commend you for your, for the way you chaired and led that meeting, for all the work that you did before to prepare for it, and the thoughtful way in which you conducted it. I thought it was an excellent discussion, and all five members of the committee contributed quite a bit. I personally agreed with a lot of what Council Scott said, and I thank him for his analysis and trenchant comments on the misuse of the reserve list. You mentioned, Madam Chair, that you had, that received additional information, which I don't need to hear now, but I haven't seen anything, and I just want to ask that the administration share that with the full council as soon as possible, because this may be a topic of discussion at the Public Health and Public Safety Committee meeting on Monday night, which is a committee of the whole. So, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. I received, I had multiple phone calls, but I also received emails, which I will forward through the clerk to the council. Thank you, Council Niedergang. Council Ewan Campen.
Madam President, yeah, Council Niedergang took a lot, took a lot of the words out of my mouth. I wanted to thank you and the members of the committee for the way that you ran the meeting. I recognize that this was a, there were a lot of eyeballs on this, and I'm just really thankful that the meeting was run the way it was, and I look forward to meetings next as well.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. Further discussion on the report. So, Mr. Clerk, I would ask for, at this time, a roll call vote of acceptance of the report, if we could please.
Very good. This is a roll call vote on the acceptance of the report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters just presented. On that, on that motion, Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Council Ballantyne.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mba.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Council Rosetti.
Yes.
And Council McLaughlin. I record no vote for Council McLaughlin. On the motion, 10 councilors voted in favor, one is absent. That motion has been approved.
Thank you, sir. So, from the chair, if I may, I would like to update the committee and the community that about 15 minutes after the meeting adjourned, I received a phone call from Ms. Weber. The chief had called her, and she wanted to immediately call me to remind us that on the current police reserve list, there is still one individual on that list. The person's name is Karan Jin Singh, which, that candidate was approved by the council on confirmation of appointments in full council on July 11, 2019. So, the motion that I made during the committee meeting to interview the top three on the list then came into question by the fact that there is already one person on the reserve list, assuming that person is still interested in becoming a Somerville police officer. However, I also did ask at the meeting for proof of the upcoming three retirements, and I did receive that information there. I will read from the email. On July 30, 2020, a police, I also wanted to know the titles and the job, the actual title of the people who are retiring. So I've been informed that on July 30, 2020, a police officer retired. August 8, 2020, a police officer retired. August 21, 2020, a police officer retired. January 25, which was a few days ago, a police officer retired. There is an expected retirement of a captain on January 29 of this year, and an expected retirement of a lieutenant on February 18 of this year. So, in effect, we now know of four officers who have retired. It's past the date. They're officially retired. So, with the one individual already on the list, it's my thought that we could still go forward and interview the three, because there will now be four openings of retirements, which would not add to the numbers by the budget, but would keep it at the numbers as discussed at June's budget time. I just wanted my colleagues to become aware of that, and I'm quickly looking to see if there is anything else. I do not have anything else. We don't have the actual letters of retirement, because the communication is sent to the retirement board, and I was informed by Ms. Collins today that she receives her information through the retirement board. So I do have an email of confirmation from Ms. Collins that that is what she has been made aware of, that I will be sure that the clerks forward to... that I will be sure that the clerks forward to you all. So, I'm not sure if anybody has any comments or questions on this report. Counselor Scott, looks like you do. You have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice President. Again, compliments on, on how you ran the meeting. I also wanted to provide some additional context. As you mentioned in the meeting, I spent a fair amount of time inquiring after the somewhat peculiar bypass process that took place here, as well as the very unusual step of expanding the reserve list for 16 hires, when in fact, only nine candidates were selected from that list. I've been concerned, again, because of the way the reserve list has been used by the City of Somerville in the past to be found by Civil Service Commission to use that reserve list in a way that provided undue favor or nepotism. I was concerned about the appearance of the process this time, where 13, where 12 candidates were bypassed, but 13 otherwise eligible candidates who had signed that they were interested in the job also withdrew. I'll leave it to viewers and my colleagues to watch that part of the conversation. But I did follow up also on the withdrawn candidates. This is a piece that is somewhat murky, because for a bypass candidate, they are issued a letter by the city saying that they have been bypassed, giving them the reasons for that bypass, and then notifying them of their rights to appeal to Civil Service Commission. For withdrawn candidates are candidates that failed to complete the process, and there could be either one of those categories and the other 13 people that were not presented. I have asked Deputy Director Collins to provide us with any documentation for the reason for those failed to complete or any signed letter of voluntary withdrawal from the process. And the reason I was compelled to do that is an investigation that was undertaken by Civil Service Commission of the Boston Police Department. This is an investigation in 2016, and the investigation report written by the Chair, Chris Bowman, of the Commission, which found that the Boston Police Department did not inform people that were being withdrawn from, or that were being ruled to have failed to complete the process of that determination and of their appeal rights, even though it's been found by the Civil Service Commission that people who failed to complete the process and are not appointed do have direct appeal rights as a bypass with Civil Service Commission. It's a very interesting conclusion. It's only a seven-page report this time. But I'd be happy to send it to the clerk for distribution to my colleagues. It just, again, emphasizes the very challenging nature of getting civil service right and the extremely vulnerable position that the city puts us in and, and our colleagues in when trying to move in this reserve list process, which opens the appearance of favoritism, and sometimes, as determined by the Commission, the actual practice of favoritism. So, I'm still pending any of that information. I hope to have it before our next meeting on the Tuesday. But I think that would be information that my colleagues would potentially find impactful as they consider how to move forward on the question of these appointments. Given that of the people that were bypassed or withdrawn, it appears that four of them are women, and a great many of them are potentially, would add to the diversity of the department. So, thank you. And I just wanted to update that that request is in process, but no documents have been presented yet.
Counselor Scott, are you asking to see the names or the, or the, have you asked for the proof of withdrawal? Is that what you're asking? You've asked?
Right. I've asked to see if there is any documentation, if, if anybody, if people who did withdraw from the process signed a voluntary statement of withdrawal from the process or sent an email saying, "I'm withdrawing my name from consideration", and, you know, and whether or not they were notified that they have bypass rights with the, you know, with Civil Service Commission. Likewise, for candidates that were judged by Human Resources or Personnel Department to have not completed the process, whether they were sent a letter informing them of that and informing them of their bypass rights with Civil Service.
So, I am, as chair, going forward with next Tuesday's meeting. If your intention is to not want to have that meeting, I, my intent is to go forward with the interview of the three candidates, of the top three scoring candidates right now. Now, the last meeting, I with, I held back on interviews so that we could have dialogue with staff about many questions we had. If you are raising more questions, I, you, so the start of the meeting may, it may involve follow-up to this request. But I am still inviting these three candidates and perhaps the fourth, who is sitting on the current reserve list. I had discussion with Ms. Collins today, because he's been on the reserve list, he or she has been on the reserve list, as I said, since July of 2019. We may want to double-check on some things on, for that. There may be a late item tonight. I didn't hear back. There may be a late item tonight with that request, or they may have chosen to wait until after, after the camp. But I just want to know where you're heading for Tuesday's interviews.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Vice President. For the purposes of the meeting that you've scheduled, certainly your prerogative as chair to schedule a meeting and set the agenda, and it has some number of interviews on it. As a, as a member of the committee, I will absolutely engage. I have quite a few questions to ask any candidates being considered, especially in light of the disturbing contents of the O'Donnell Appeal, which indicated that some candidates being selected for hire here by the City of Somerville had, let's say, less than clear opinions about whether or not an officer should steal cash and drugs from a, from a bust or from an arrest. So, I certainly have questions about these candidates. I will, though, ask that at the start of the meeting, we have some conversation with the, with the Deputy Director to discuss what materials were presented in response to these inquiries or why any materials are not being presented in response to these inquiries. So, I would appreciate your, your forbearance at the start of the meeting to have some, a little bit more of that procedural discussion before we move to interviewing the candidates.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any further discussion on this report? Hearing none. Thank you. I will text President McLaughlin if we could take a brief recess. I'm going to send him a text now that he can re-enter. Mr. Clerk, will you recess? Oh, there he is. Never mind. Thank you.
All right. Returned from recess. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, read the next item.
Returning to the regular order of business, Mr. President, we move to item number five, which is a resolution suited by City Councilors McLaughlin, Mubba, Klingon, Ballantyne, White, and Niedergang, urging fair and full employment opportunities at Amazon.
See, Counselor Davis would like to sign on, and I'll be very brief on this. This was brought up to me. And Counselor Strezzo, and Ewan Campen. And yes. So, basically, you know, anybody who lives in the city knows that Amazon is really big for everybody, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. But I think it's good to have some standards when it comes to the richest organization in the world. And this is basically a resolution supported by organized labor to make sure that, and Counselor Ewan Campen would like to sign on as well, to make sure that the standards that we uphold for everybody are held to. And Counselor Scott, the entire board would like to sign on, so I don't even have to make a speech. Any discussion? Hearing none. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number six is a communication suited by Counselor Mubba, reporting on the search for a racial and social justice director.
Counselor Ba.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is an ongoing process. We are, it's the, so I just want to say, like, the process, you know, to hire the director of racial and social justice is underway, and it's going strong. And so, this is supplemental information to the memo that was attached to this communication last city council meeting. So, a total of more than 120 individuals submitted applications for the director of racial and social justice role according to NPAG, the consultant that we're working with, and they review and reach out to another 140 individuals in their network, the network that they're using their search strategy. And of those, you know, there's half more than 50 individuals for nomination and referrals. So, in total, you know, they video screen more than 40 prospects and promising qualified applicants. So, we, the search committee, invited those individuals into our first round of interviews. And the first five of these interviews were conducted January 22nd and 23rd last week. And another first round interviews are planned for this weekend. So, the goal is to move quickly to the second round in early February with a shortlist of priorities semi-finalists. And I'm sure, you know, there will be logistics, like references, background checks will be conducted, you know, on the finalists. So, we anticipate moving, you know, according to the administration and NPAG, you know, like, we anticipate bringing somebody on board, like, in late February or early March. So, that is the high-level summary of where we are in the process. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any discussion on the item? Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, through you to Counselor Mubba, what would the second round look like? Is it the same batch of candidates, or is it a new batch?
So, thank you, Counselor Strezzo. So, the second round will be the candidate that was selected from the first round. So, this is not a new batch. But right now, the ones that will be interviewed this weekend is still part of the first round, because we haven't, and then we will now meet and then select the candidate that will come for the second round of interviews.
Are you able to disclose what you're looking for in a candidate?
I mean, I would, we'll produce that at the end. I think, I don't know, like, if it's perhaps, you know, like, this is something, since I've started, since I came on board in this process, I wanted to make sure that the council is still updated. So, at the end, we will, I will present, like, the entire, like, criteria, including the composition of this, of those search committees. So, we all, you know, get a sense of who, where those involve, and what we, what we took out, you know, and even the qualification of the candidate. So, stay tuned, Counselor Strezzo.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This item is laid on the table for, placed on file.
Mr. President, item number eight is a report of the Committee on Finance, which met on January 26th.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the Finance Committee met on January 26th. All members are present. It was a meeting that took only 45 minutes. There are a number of items which were kept in committee, including a request to accept a grant for the purchase of thermal imaging cameras. My profound thanks to Counselor Ewan Campen for his consultation and advisement on the content of our Surveillance Technology Ordinance, made the administration aware of the fact that in order for us to accept this grant, in fact, in order for us to have applied for this grant, the city council should have been notified in advance since thermal energy cameras are specifically called out in the ordinance as requiring a technology policy. And so, we are keeping that item in committee until the council has been presented with and accepted a technology policy for these particular cameras. We're eager to do so. Just want to ensure that the city's in compliance with the new surveillance ordinance. And our part as the city council requires us to have one of those in place before we accept the grant. An item, settling a claim for damage to their property due to a backup sewer main was approved. And a discussion was had of approving the city to rededicate Conway Park to open space in recreational use in perpetuity and to pursue grants that are dependent upon that in order to obtain these grants. It looks like the grant is a total of about 3/4 of $1 million. So, despite the opposition to the project itself by several counselors, it was approved unanimously to seek the funding to offset that cost to taxpayers by 3/4 of $1 million. The larger discussion of the evening was about the budget process for FY '22. Once again, congratulations to this council on proceeding in record time and under very stressful circumstances, including well over 12 hours of discussion about the police budget alone. I think our process last year was a smashing success. We had a discussion with Mr. Maschoni about where they are in the process of planning. Right now, they are just starting to come up with the process and plan for, for the budget. And they are actively seeking our input as counselors for the priorities that we would like to see the administration pursue. So, if there are, my, my request to colleagues is, if you have initiatives that you've been working on with department heads to flesh out, if you have initiatives that you haven't been working with department heads to flesh out, that you would just like to see the city place money towards, it would be good to have that information as early as possible, and I would be happy to put it on an agenda for a Finance Committee meeting so that there can be discussion of that desire and that prioritization with the administration and with members of the committee so that we can get that information front-loaded into this planning process, rather than waiting for perhaps March, when we might receive the program improvement request lists from the department heads. And that might get to us in March, might get to us in April. So, there was also some discussion about the levy limit, about the debt service that the city is facing, and also about kind of the separate track of finance that is related to COVID grants and COVID funding at the state and federal. and federal level, which is also offsetting some of the city's costs at the moment. So, Council Ballantyne asked pointedly about whether or not everybody in the city was still going to have a job. So, there's going to be a lot of great conversation about this moving forward. I look forward to having an even more collaborative process this year than in the last. And, yeah, I just would encourage any members who have considerations about programs to increase funding towards, places that you want in staff increased, or even departments that you would like to see de-emphasized in terms of their budgets, to please reach out and have conversation with me, so that we can figure out how to get that on an agenda for a Finance meeting in the near future. We also placed on file all of the documents we had in response to the Fleet Division's ordinary maintenance budget, all of the DPW invoice information that we had been looking for several months ago. The DPW Director of Finance for DPW has provided an enormous number of documents there, which Council Rosetti requests to be placed on file. They are all publicly available now and may prove useful in the next budget season. With that, Mr. President, I ask that report be accepted and submitted.
All right. On the committee report, Council Strezzo.
Thank you. I just, the point was that, yes, I would like to get, I would like to talk to Mr. President through you to Council Scott. I would be interested in talking about the budget and projects for going forward. So, count me in. Thank you very much.
Council Umba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to state for the record that I was recused for the Conway deliberation and the vote.
Thank you very much. Let the record show that Council Umba is recused. So, Council Scott has moved to accept the committee report as submitted, and there is an item in there to vote. So, we will do a roll call vote on accepting the committee report.
Mr. President, on acceptance of the Finance Committee report just presented, Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Well.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Umba. I don't record a vote. Whoop. Councilor Umba is recused. Council, Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 10 councils have voted in favor of that item. One is recused. That item has been approved.
Okay. And now, we have a roll call vote on an item in the committee report?
That's correct, Mr. President. This is a roll call vote on that item 211148. That's the item addressing matters with respect to Conway Park, including its rededication to open space and recreational use in perpetuity. On that item, Councilor Niedergang.
Real quick, any discussion before that?
Oh.
Just want to make sure people know what they're voting on. Here and no discussion, please call the roll.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Umba. I don't record a vote for Councilor Umba. Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 10 councils have voted in favor of that item. One is recused. That item has been approved.
All right. Next item.
Next item is item number nine, which is a report of the Committee on Land Use, which met on January 19th.
Council Ewan Campen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Land Use Committee met on Tuesday, January 19th, and a good deal of the discussion that night was focused on a very inspiring new piece of zoning legislation that the city of Boston recently passed, which is the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Zoning Amendment, which was introduced and spearheaded by Boston City Councilor Lydia Edwards, and which is incredibly relevant for, I think, work that we will be doing in Somerville. And before I give the committee report, I want to make an apology. So, for this committee meeting, because we were going to be discussing a piece of legislation from Boston, I reached out to Boston City Councilor Kenzie Bach, who, who had also been involved in the legislation, and I asked her to join our committee for a discussion. And I had recently appeared before Councilor Bach's committee to discuss Somerville's affordable housing overlay. So, as I was putting together this agenda, the idea popped into my head to ask her to come to Somerville to discuss some of the work that had been going on in Boston. However, in my excitement to talk about this legislation, I failed to invite Councilor Edwards herself, who, again, was the original sponsor of this legislation. And so, I want to be really clear. This is not just apologizing for failing to give proper credit to a city councillor, although, of course, that, that's an oversight. The important issue, and the reason I'm taking the time to bring this up, is that this is not just any piece of legislation. This is a groundbreaking, first-in-the-nation piece of legislation that is specifically focused on racial discrimination and on using zoning as a tool to fight against racial discrimination. And the fact is that I created a situation where, here we are discussing a racial justice legislation, and yet, Councilor Edwards herself, who is a black woman, who spent two years working on this legislation, and really should have been in the room and was not in the room, and that was my fault. I hope it goes without saying, of course, this mistake was totally unintentional, but, you know, the intention isn't really what's important here. What is important is just the basic facts. So, I want to apologize, and, of course, I want to thank everyone who took the time to call me out on this. I have, I have certainly learned from this, and I'm committed to doing better in the future. So, continuing to the committee report itself, we had an excellent conversation about what Boston's new Fair Housing Amendment does. And, and very briefly, the idea is that similarly to the way that projects are analyzed for effects on environmental sustainability, on mobility, traffic and parking, on groundwater, thanks to this amendment, there is now a formal process for reviewing projects based on affirmatively furthering fair housing, taking active steps to, to reduce discrimination along racial, along any protected class. And importantly, it creates a menu of options that developers can employ to specifically address those issues. And these, the options scale based on the size of the project and also the location of the project in the historical context. So, I'm not going to go into the details of this tonight, but I would encourage anyone who's interested to watch the video of the committee meeting, and also to Google "Boston Fair Housing Article 80." You will find an excellent website that has a wealth of relevant details, including all the forms and a lot of the background. And I would also just say, you know, keep, keep your eyes peeled. I think that the, this committee is very interested in working with, with planning staff to understand what components of that approach can be adapted to Somerville. In addition to that, we spent the rest of the meeting talking about a raft of relatively minor zoning amendments proposed by the administration. These amendments are described in detail in a handout attached to the agenda, including a column that kind of explains the purpose. You'll see, the purpose of most of these is, like, clarification, omission, issues that have arisen now that the code is actually out there in real life. And I'll be scheduling a public hearing on these amendments in the coming weeks. So, I would encourage all of you to take a look through. Let me know if you have thoughts, questions. One of the amendments that got a little bit more discussion is, it is, relates to the Boynton Yards Overlay District. Now, Dan Bartman from the planning staff was emphatic that these changes are not substantive, that they are actually all clarifications. But, you know, to, to anyone looking at this, it sure looks like a lot of red line changes. So, I want to just mark this. Dan, at the request of Councilor Davis, Dan Bartman is going to come up with kind of an explainer about what, what all of these changes mean, but I just want to call this out, particularly to the Ward Councillor, Councilor Scott, to take a look at this and make sure that, that we're all in agreement. And with that, I would direct anyone to the video of the meeting and the meeting minutes and ask that the committee report be accepted as submitted.
All right. Council Ewan Campen would like to move to accept the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? Here and now, the committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item number 10 is, item 10 is a report of Committee on Legislative Matters, which met on January 21st.
Council Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Legislative Matters did meet on January 21st. All members were present. I will make the, make this report very brief. We talked about the, a number of Surveillance Technology Impact Reports. None were voted on, because there were some, there still remain some adjustments and changes that need to be made to the, the use policy, sort of, under which these sit, or at least, once we made those changes, they will, sort of, be incorporated. So, there's a bit of paperwork to do, but the good news is that substantively, we're all in agreement and, and generally feel that these reports are appropriate and where they, where they should be. So, as soon as those, as soon as the changes to the use policy are made, and to be clear, the, the administration owns the use policy. That's not a document that the committee can, you know, just vote to amend. So, we've, we've been working collaboratively with the administration to, to express sort of some of the concerns we had about the use policy. And so, we expect to see revisions to that in the next Legislative Matters Committee meeting, which will be on February 4th. Just from a timing standpoint, it's important that we have that finished, because if, if we don't, then I will be moving to vote to reject all of the impact reports on the, at the City Council meeting on the 11th, because that's the last meeting before our, our, our time window expires. Hopefully, that won't be necessary. I don't think it will be, but just in case we get to that point, and it's, that's, that's why. But, as I said, next week, we, as we discussed in the meeting, in this past meeting, at, at the following meeting, which will be next Thursday, a week from tonight, hopefully we'll have some adjustments to the use policy, which will then essentially let all the dominoes fall into place, and we'll be in good shape there. So, and thank you to the administration, and particularly the Police Department for their, their work on those. That was really the, the crux of most of the discussion. The other item on the agenda was the item brought up at the last City Council meeting to, to make amendments to the city charter and the city code of ordinances, to make them gender neutral, to take out binary pronouns. I did make a motion that the city solicitor draft language to change our pronouns in the city's, city's ordinance to gender neutral, essentially, which is taking half of the, the existing item and bifurcating it. The, in order to change the charter, we'll need a home rule petition. So, the Solicitor's Office is working on that. We'll have to send that up to the state to ask their permission to make those changes to the words. But, as far as the ordinances go, we can do that ourselves. So, I thought we ought to split the two pieces up and have the move in parallel, so that, that's what we'll, we'll do. And the administration is fully supportive, and the Solicitor's Office will be working on that. It's going to take some time. So, for any folks following along and looking for this to happen, we all are very, I would say, excited. I mean, we recognize that we probably shouldn't have done this a while back, but need to move forward with all, all due diligence now. But, it is a very, just labor-intensive task going through, making sure that all the, all the, not only the words, but the, the plural and singular and tenses and everything around, all of the instances are correct. So, it'll take a bit of time. The Solicitor's Office is, is working on it, and they're, they're very much supportive as well. So, we will get this done. But, just so folks know, there's, there's just a, a good bit of keystroke in. It has to happen. So, that's it. With that, Mr. President, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
All right. Council Davis requests the report be accepted as submitted on the committee report. Council Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, my, the sound went out a little bit. I just wanted to reconfirm on my order on this, is the entire document. So, the document that is posted on the city's website will actually show gender neutral. It will not, I just want to be clear that there's not a paragraph at the end that, that says that's going to happen. I'm sorry. I didn't hear everything.
Yeah. If I may, Mr. President?
Council Davis.
Thank you. And to Council Ballantyne, I thank you for the, for the question. Yes, absolutely. And that is, that is what we discussed. And as I noted, there's, there's two documents. And so, you know, we'll, we'll take the time to ask the state for permission to, to change all the words all the way through in the one. And in the meantime, we'll go through the work to change all the words and all of the surrounding tenses in the other one, and do that as soon as we can get it, get those, those changes made.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr.
Any further discussion? Here and now, the committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item number 11 is a request to the mayor requesting the appropriation of $130,853 from the Medical Marijuana Stabilization Fund for Substance Use Prevention, Community Parent and Student Education, overdose, overdose and naloxone training, and an overdose prevention center.
All right. Council Scott, are there any finance items that you would like to approve tonight, or should we refer them all to committee?
Mr. President, I believe items number 11 through 21 will all be going to committee.
All right. Council Scott waves the, moves to waive the readings of items number 11 through 21 and refer them to committee. Any discussion? Here and now, the items are referred to the Finance Committee.
That brings us to item number 22, which is a request to the mayor requesting the reappointment of Andrew Haynes as Constable.
This item will be referred to the Confirmation of Appointments Committee.
And 23 is a request, the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Colleen Moran to the Municipal Job Creation Retention Board of Trustees.
This item will be referred to Confirmation of Appointments.
Item 24 is a communication from the Memorialization Committee conveying the naming of a new street between Windsor Street and Harding Street as Archibald Quarry Way.
Any discussion? Here and now, I support naming it after the owner, creator of fluff. Anyone else? Council Scott?
As the Ward Councillor, I'm all in.
All right. This item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Item number 25 is a communication from the Memorialization Committee conveying the naming of a new park at 1060 Broadway as Luann David Park.
Any discussion? Council Ballantyne.
Thank you. I just want to thank the Memorialization Committee. I think that, if those of you who don't know who Luann David was, she was a resident of Clarendon Hill Towers. She was instrumental when the expiring use of that building was happening, I think, in the 80s, to organize the 501 households that exist over there. So, it became a tenant-owned organization, and it's kept it permanently affordable. She was a huge, huge advocate for, for affordable housing. And, you know, she worked on it for, for decades, and we're still all working on it. So, I just think it's, it's a wonderful tribute to her and to all the work that people do for affordable housing. Thank you.
Council Strezzo and Council Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. May her memory be a blessing. Thank you.
Council Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I do remember Luann David. She was, she was terrific. And I also remember Mary Louise Daley, who I often saw together with, with Luann at city meetings and advocating for affordable housing and other important things. And I just wanted to ask through you to Council Ballantyne, or the councilors who are on the Memorialization Committee, I believe Council Rosetti and Council Bach, was there any discussion about Mary Louise Daley and any consideration about naming something for her? Perhaps Council Ballantyne or Council White knew that the two of them better than I did, and might have some more insight as to whether Mary Louise Daley also deserves some honor. But, I always think of them together, you know, as kind of collaborators and, and partners. So, I just wanted to raise that as, as I remember both of them so well, and they were both such fighters and so feisty. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. See, Council White, did you have a comment?
Yes. They were quite involved in community activities even after the work was done at the, at the Clarendon Hill building. And the both of them were tremendous friends. It was incredible. You would go to many, many civic-type meetings in, in the city, especially those dealing with housing, and, and the both of them would be there, and they worked very hard together into their, you know, let's say, they were quite old and, and active. And, and I agree with Council Niedergang that I believe it would be appropriate to consider Ms., Ms. Daley as well, to have something named for her.
All right. Any further All right, any further comment or discussion?
Mr. President, it's Counsel Rosetti.
Counsel Rosetti.
Thank you. I'm sure Counsel Bah agrees with me. We'll be glad to bring anything for discussion to the Memorialization Committee, but with that discussion must come attachments of documents, of stories, or of the history, or the knowledge, or what it is about this candidate. We have a growing list of potentials for future consideration of memorializations. And before the Memorialization Committee will begin to look at anybody, it must come with a documentation of information about that person. So if any of you have, I knew her also. So I don't have information, documentation about her. So I ask you to please forward to Counsel Bah and myself that information. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
Thank you, Counsel Rosetti.
And here are no further conversations. This item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Item number 26 is a communication from the Directors of Health and Human Services and Inspeccional Services conveying a Residential Rodent Control Assistance Program update.
Any discussion? Here are none. This item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Item number 27 is an item of new business. It's an application to renew a taxi medallion license for Mount Pleasant Taxi.
Counsel White.
Thank you. I was going to move to waive the reading of item 27, but also item 28 and ask if they approve. We approved this evening. It's my understanding from the City Clerk that all information has been provided and everything is in order.
All right. Here are no discussion. I know Counsel White moves to waive the readings of items 27, 28, move for approval. Any discussion? Here are none. Counsel Ewan Campbell, did you have a comment on this?
Apologies, Mr. President. I missed it. I'd like to ask that number 26, please go to the Special Committee on Rodents, an update on rodents.
Okay. Well, let's see, 27, 28 are laid on the table for approval, and 26 is placed on file with a copy sent to the Rodent Committee. Counsel Scott?
Yeah, Mr. President, just on 26, just for folks at home, this is communicating an expansion of the city's rodent control program, the baiting program, to include non-owner-occupied properties. This is an immense benefit and hopefully, you know, if we can let people know that this is available, we can get some of the very many properties in Somerville that are non-owner-occupied enrolled in this. The rodent and pest problem is at an incredible level. So I appreciate that this expansion is happening. I look forward to discussion in the Rodent Committee, but I just wanted to highlight it to anybody who is watching at home that this program is now available for non-owner-occupied properties. Thanks.
All right, Counsel Niedigang would like to note that it's three units or less only. And Counsel Strezko, you have a comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have a question. Can I put forward a motion for the Communications Department, for an order right now, that the Communications Department consider a, some kind of communication effort on this expansion of program? Because getting this out to the community is essential. We know that this has been a massive barrier to some of the rat control issues we're facing.
All right, so Counsel Strezko would like to move to have the Communications Department inform the community of the updates to the rodent baiting program. Does that work?
A communication campaign, potentially?
Communication campaign, let's see.
Targeted communication via mail and multiple social media efforts.
There we go. Do you have all that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Here are no discussion. The motion will be laid on the table for approval.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, where were we? Next item?
Code item number 29, which is a communication from eight residents of color submitting comments regarding the hiring police officers of color.
This item will be laid on the table and placed on file.
30 is a communication submitted by BIPOC residents submitting comments regarding the hiring of police officers.
This item will be laid on the table and placed on file.
And number 31 is communication from Dan Thorne submitting comments regarding police funding.
This item will be laid on the table and placed on file.
Item 32 is an order submitted by Counsel McGlaughlin, the Director of SBCD, and the city solicitor update this council on what can be done to address copycat restaurant websites that are misleading customers to order through their website instead of the restaurant's website.
So this item is just as much a public service announcement as it is a request for information. I already discussed it with the Director of SBCD. And there's a lot of their websites out there, copycat websites pretending to be the restaurant that you order food from. And what they're doing is just like the issues we've had with Grubhub and other businesses overcharging for delivery services, they're trying to trick you into going through them instead of going directly to the restaurant, and then they take a cut of that delivery service. So it's very dishonest, misleading, and might have to come down to the individual restaurants to file a lawsuit because it does seem like there's copyright issues or total, it's just a fraud in my mind. So I would, that's why I introduced this, is just to make people aware, to make sure that the restaurant you're ordering from is the restaurant that you're looking for. I see Counsel Klingon and Ewan Campbell would like to sign on, and Counsel Strezko has a comment.
Thank you. I am, I was really excited to see this on the agenda. I had actually done some research with the Law Department on this in September, and we, and so I'm, whatever committee this gets assigned to, I definitely want to be in on the conversation. And there is potential for an ordinance. And, Mr. President, are you speaking specifically about the deceptive phone numbers? Or are you going more broadly with the, with websites?
Well, for what I was brought up to, my attention was websites, and they're very professional-looking websites that are pretending to be the restaurants that they're not. So that's, I don't know about phone numbers. I know about the websites.
Okay. What I did with some research with the Law Department, because there are third-party restaurant apps that have specific, so this is similar. They have specific phone numbers. So when you Google a restaurant that you want to order from, you are provided with the number when you Google it. But you're not actually calling the restaurant, you're calling a third party, which has its own number assigned to a restaurant. And then, and then you call that number, that, that third party that's not even affiliated with the restaurant takes a cut of that restaurant's commission. And it has been, it has been oppressively charging restaurants and causing a lot of, a lot of unnecessary costs. And that's where my research came into this. So it might be great to combine that and have that discussion. What committee were you considering placing this in?
Well, for me, I was planning on just approving the item and having the Economic Development Department get back to me because I have spoken to them about it already. So I'm waiting for a response from them. And I think for me, it would be best to approve the item and give the city time to respond. And if they don't respond, we can have a full discussion about it.
Okay, but there's potential here and there's definitely steps we can take. So I am really looking forward to continuing on the discussion. This will definitely help restaurants.
Very good. Thank you. And I see Counsel, let's see, I got lost here, but I got Klingon, Strezko, Ewan Campbell, Valentine, Davis, and Bah, and Scott, the whole council would like to sign on. Seeing no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number 33 is an order submitted by Counsel McGlaughlin that the COVID-19 Response Team update the committee on Public Health and Safety on the Phase II vaccine rollout for residents, particularly senior citizens and other vulnerable residents.
All right, so I see there's a few orders similar to this, so I don't need to make a big speech, but I'm very curious about when the vaccine rolls out. I have four senior homes in my ward, and I just want to make sure people are prioritized. Counsel Valentine would like to sign on. Any discussion? And Strezko?
Mr. President?
Counsel Davis.
Just real quickly, so I have asked the mayor to appear before the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety on Monday to discuss the COVID response, including vaccine rollout. So I hope to hear, if you care to send this item to that committee, I can add it to the agenda, given that it's a new item. But either way, I intend to ask that question on Monday.
Thank you. I do intend on sending it to that committee. Any further discussion? Here are none. This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to Public Health and Safety.
Item 34 is an order submitted by Counsel Strezko that the Directors of Health and Human Services and the Counsel on Aging collaborate to bridge the digital divide for residents who seek to obtain the COVID vaccine, who may not have access to the internet.
All right, Counsel Strezko.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. If any of my colleagues have any questions, happy to discuss it, but thank you.
All right, here are no further discussions. This item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to Public Health and Safety.
Item 35 is a resolution submitted by Counsel Rumbaugh that the administration help residents over 75 years of age sign up for COVID-19 vaccinations.
Counsel Bah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to you and Counsel Strezko. This is also along those lines, you know, and it was brought, you know, to my attention even by our neighbor, who's a senior for that matter. And it's pretty clear that the state are still in their vaccine rollout effort. So we as a community need to step up and show our seniors that we have their back. You know, we have voter rolls, you know, with birth dates, often phone numbers as well. Hopefully, we even have more than that. There's sensors that we might be able to use. So, you know, those are just a few pointers when I saw this and I thought, you know, we should do something about it. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Counsel Strezko would like to sign on. Here are none. This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to the Public Health and Safety Committee.
Item number 36 is a resolution submitted by Counsel Rumbaugh and Counsel Niedigang that the administration include teachers on the priority list as the vaccine distribution plan is rolled out.
All right, Counsel Strezko would like to sign on, and Ewan Campbell, Counsel Bah.
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. President. It's pretty clear, you know, we need to put, this is saying, put your money where your mouth is, or put your, you know, it's like if we want to see our kids and teachers back in the classroom, you know, we have to also demonstrate that they are priority to us, especially our teachers. So I heard that Everett, you know, was able to secure vaccine for their teachers and move them up. So why not some of you?
All right, Counsel Ewan Campbell and Scott would like to sign on. Counsel Scott would like to sign on, and Davis for 33 through 36. And I'll just give a quick update on this one, too, because the current plan for if and when the schools finally reopen is to test all students and teachers twice a week for COVID. And that is not finalized yet, but that is one of the stipulations that the mayor has presented. So hopefully, this concern will be addressed. But I will, Counsel Strezko wants to comment, and after that, I'll refer this to Public Health and Safety.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I would like to ask if you use the other prepositional phrase or not instead, if the school's open, or change it to, we'll strike that prepositional phrase and just do it, when the school's open. Hopefully sooner.
If I had the power to make that decision, I would say that. But unfortunately, as you will read from my column about charter reform, a lot of these decisions are not in the hands of myself or even the school committee.
Always comes back to charter reform.
Exactly. Counsel Valentine would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Here are none. This item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to the Public Health and Safety Committee.
Item number 37 is a request to the mayor requesting the appropriation of $36,720 from the Salary and Wage Stabilization Fund to the Executive Office salaries account to establish two new racial and justice, racial and social justice staff positions.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request from the mayor that was brought first to the Finance Committee in a memo exactly one hour before our meeting was to start in response to, I think, concerns from multiple counselors that the process committed to in June and July of 2020 had not been making any progress. So this is a proposal to create two full-time positions to support the Director of Racial and Social Justice, who, as we heard tonight, has only begun the very first round of interview process. This would be obviously a mid-year budget expansion, and presumably the funds for this, while it's not, while it's not clear that they would come from the racial, they would come from the Salary and Wage Stabilization Fund instead of the million-dollar set aside for the racial and social justice program. So I think there's going to be a lot of questions about these two positions. I'd like them to be sent to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
All right, on the item, Counsel Niedigang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to express at this time my extreme disinclination to support this. I haven't decided for certain because I do want to hear the discussion, but it just seems to me to makes no sense at all to hire two staff a month or six weeks before we're hiring their boss. How would you like it if two of your staff, you take a new position and two of your staff were just hired and you had no say in it? I just don't understand what's the rush after six months to get these two new staff hired, you know, a month before the director is hired? I also have some grave concerns about the job descriptions, about the fact that one of the positions will be seated in the Police Department and their job will be to reimagine certain aspects of the Police Department's work. All in all, I feel like this is very poorly conceived. The timing of it is terrible, and I just think we should put this on hold and wait until we have the Director of Racial and Social Justice to move forward. With the Office of Housing Stability, we waited quite a while to hire the director. We hired the right person, Ellen Shacter. She hired the staff. That office has been clicking on all cylinders ever since. Why wouldn't we want to do it differently with something as important as the Office of Racial and Social Justice? Thank you.
And any further discussion? I'll just say that I agree with Counsel Niedigang in terms of the Housing Department that we created and the Office of Housing Stability. We had the same conversation and we ended up creating those positions afterwards, and they ended up being great hires. So I think you make a good point, Counsel Niedigang. If there's no discussion, this item will be referred to the Committee of Finance.
Item 38 is a communication from the Fair Housing Commission, which submits its annual report for fiscal year 2020.
Any discussion? Here are none. This item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Mr. President, there are a couple laid items that have come in. We have laid items from counselors Klingon and Davis and two from the administration.
Okay, let's take it in that order.
First is a laid item from Counselor Klingon that the DPW Commissioner install a temporary speed bump on Sycamore Street between the entrance to the Winter Hill School, main entrance, and the Winter Hill School, Schoolyard entrance.
Counsel Klingon.
Just send it to traffic and parking, please.
All right, if there's no discussion, this item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking.
Next is an item from Counselor Klingon that the Director of Housing appear before this council's Housing and Community Development Committee to discuss how the 100 Homes Program works specifically in terms of property upkeep and maintenance.
Counsel Klingon.
No comment, Mr. President. Just refer to Housing and Economic Development Committee.
All right, if there's no further conversation, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to Housing and Community Development.
We have an order submitted by Counselor Davis that the Director of Communications revise city webpages so that links to non-English language versions of the page appear at the very top of the page prior to any English language content.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be real brief, first and foremost, to acknowledge that the Communications Department does an excellent job comparatively to other communities in terms of providing different language versions of websites and, you know, kudos for that. Actually, I for that. Actually, a resident brought this up to me today in relation to, I believe, the COVID website, that there are prominent links for different languages, but there's about half a page down underneath some English, English content. And she said, well, why don't we just have that right at the top? So fair point. You know, there are other websites where there aren't links as prominently placed, and so maybe that might be a little bit more work. But I wanted, I told her I'd throw an item in here, at the very least, where we have those. Seems to make sense to me that they be the first thing that folks see, so that they don't have to wade through English language stuff if they don't read English, if they don't read the English language. So maybe there's a reason to do it otherwise from a coding standpoint or something. I'm not aware of. I'm so happy to, you know, understand that, but wanted to just put that suggestion in there. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Klingon, Strezzo, and Ballantyne would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Here are none. This item is laid on the table for approval.
We have, Mr. President, a request to the mayor requesting the use of available funds in various DPW ordinary maintenance accounts to pay prior fiscal year invoices totaling $52,414.95.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. On this item, I did have a conversation with the interim director, our interim commissioner, Commissioner Lathan, about this. This is the first of what is apparently to be several batches of invoices from DPW that have been discovered as part of, I guess you could call it an audit, as they are attempting to identify old and unprocessed invoices that have been packing up over there for quite some time. Apparently, there are several from 2017. I would request that these be sent to Finance so that we can give them some scrutiny and understand more along the perennial question we've been asking now for quite some time, what the heck is going on down at DPW. So I appreciate the diligence of staff down there in pulling this together, and I'm sure Finance Committee will take a close look.
All right, any further discussion? Here are none. This item will be referred to the Committee of Finance.
And the last item that I'm aware of, Mr. President, is a request to the mayor requesting the approval of amendments to the zoning ordinances for new edits, corrections, and clarifications.
Okay. I guess this will be laid on the table and referred, no, this is going to refer to legislative matters.
This, these matters typically go to the Committee on Land Use and with a copy to the Planning Board for the joint public hearing that's required.
Okay, I apologize. As the clerk said, this item will be laid on the table. Refer to the Land Use Committee with a copy sent to Planning Department, Planning Board.
Very good, Mr. President. No further items before the council this evening.
Counselor Scott says he has a few late items.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. My apologies for not reducing these in writing before the meeting here. The first late item is a motion that the Public Health and Public Safety Committee, or an item that this council consider amending Section 10.1 of the Somerville Code of Ordinances to, to remove the requirement specified for number of officers. The 10.1 is the organization of the Police Department, and thanks, many thanks to the clerk, John Long, who undertook some research going back to 1936 for all the different versions of this ordinance that have been in existence. Up until 1971, the ordinance actually read, had fixed numbers.
Counselor Scott, if I could cut you off really quick, I should probably step down and have Counselor Rosetti take the podium for this.
Okay.
All right, Counselor Rosetti.
Here I am. You may continue, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, President Rosetti. So on, up until 1971, the number of superior officers had been set by ordinance as part of the organization of the Police Department, and it said that a number of patrolmen, as is established, as is determined to be necessary by the Board of Aldermen from time to time. In 1971, a fixed number was set there. But I don't believe that number necessarily serves us very well, as evidenced by the fact that our current staffing in no way reflects that. Likewise, the number of sergeants, lieutenants, and captains specified in that ordinance don't reflect the current composition of the Police Department. I bring this up to make it clear that the size of our Police Department has been a question, a decision reserved to the Board of Aldermen, going back at least until 19, at least from 1936 on. And I think, right now, as we struggled extensively in the Finance Committee meetings, and later found that the city's allocation of funds in the internal budget didn't necessarily line up with what everybody perceived the intent of those actions to be, I would like us to revisit that ordinance so that we can bring it up to date and perhaps reassert this council's actual authority to establish the composition and size of the Police Department. So the motion is simply that this council consider amendments to update Section 10.1 of Somerville City Ordinance. And I would leave it to you as to which committee that should be referred to, whether that would be Public Health, Public Safety, or Legislative Matters, or Finance. But ultimately, it's policy decision, policy discussion about the size of our police force. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk, you have that motion?
Yes, I do, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Before we move the vote, I'm going to defer, Counselor Scott, you happen to chair, I believe, both Public Health, Public Safety, and Legislative, excuse me, Counselor Davis, did I say Scott? Counselor Davis, you happen to chair both Legislative Matters and Public Health, Public Safety this year. Is that true?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay. Do you, I don't know what type of caseload you have in both of your committees. Do you have a preference which committee this goes to?
Madam President, I think I, I, my preference would be to take it up in Legislative Matters, but I'm certainly open to suggestions to the contrary.
No, honestly, I think either would work, so I will. Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Clerk, if we can wrap this, well, actually, we'll have to take this up separately since Mr. President needs to recuse himself. Before we take this up, Counselor Scott, did you have a second late item also?
I do.
Is it police-related?
Well, tangentially, Madam President, but, but not directly, so I don't believe.
Will the president need to recuse himself?
I don't believe so, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll on the current motion on the floor before us?
Certainly, Madam President. This is a roll call vote on the late order submitted by, just submitted by Counselor Scott. On that motion, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campton.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin. I don't record a vote for Counselor McLaughlin. Madam President, we have 10 councils have voted in favor of that order. One is recused. That order has been approved.
Thank you. That will be referred to Legislative Matters, Mr. Clerk. I have texted the president, asking him to reenter, so if we could wait a second. There he is. The floor is yours, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next item, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you noted in your recent editorial, but let me start with the motion. The motion is that this council be provided with outside legal counsel to advise on matters related to civil service and the, related to civil service hiring processes. This is similar to orders that have been submitted by this council in the past, and as you noted in your recent editorial, the ability to have our own legal counsel is essential. We have requested it on many occasions. The only times when we have been provided with it have been when a court or when the Civil Service Commission itself has directed the city in no uncertain terms that in these proceedings, the city council is, in fact, its own entity, is not well-served by sharing the solicitor's office and does require its own counsel. So when told by outside entity on multiple occasions, outside counsel has been reserved for this city council, I believe it's appropriate as we, as we continue to peel the onion on the civil service hiring processes and we approach one where, quite frankly, litigation is almost certain to be an outcome, I would very much like to have outside counsel. So my motion is simply requiring that the city council requires outside legal counsel to advise on particular matters related to civil service hiring processes.
All right, any discussion? I have Counselor Davis and Counselor Strezzo, and Counselor Rosetti would like to sign on.
Here, here. I'd like to sign on.
Counselor Davis would like to sign on. Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. Through you to Counselor Scott, where, where did you, did I, did I miss this? Where would you propose the money for this to come from in the budget?
Well, Counselor Strezzo, that would be entirely up to the mayor to appropriate either from one of the many stabilization funds, from the lag funds, from any number of departments that have not met their hiring targets, or even from the money set aside for the city council specifically to pursue projects. I remind all of us that there is still a bucket of money that was set aside, I believe quarter million dollars, in our last budget. So there is absolutely money for this. It's, it's up to the mayor, though, where he would spend it from.
Would it make more sense, Mr. President, through you to Counselor Scott, would it make more sense if the council, if the council, the city council had actual control over the budget of having our own council?
Um, Mr. President, through you, I, I'm not sure how to, I mean, I think it'd make a lot more sense if we just had a lawyer. I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, maybe I'm missing.
Money's going to come from somewhere in this.
Well, if I could say, the problem is, even the money that the city council presently has, the mayor's office would have to approve the use of that money. And in my commentary that Counselor Scott mentioned, and I encourage everybody to read it.
Comes back to charter. If you, if you mention charter, you're going to do it, aren't you? You're going to mention.
It comes back to charter reform, because we don't have control of a lawyer. And I will say that I really do appreciate the city solicitor's office when they do help us, but it's very difficult to represent two sides, two opposing sides in any conversation. So, and then I, one just final comment to Counselor Scott. An editorial is written by the editor of the newspaper, so it would be a commentary, just the old journalist and me coming out. So that's my comment on that, but I see Counselor Rosetti wanted to comment.
And, and hold on, I'm, let, really quick, I do want to say that, yes, there's no disrespect to the city solicitor's office and the bind people that serve us and that, but at the same time, I know I do agree that we could use our outside counsel, but I just want to know where the money would be. Thank you.
And it looks like the whole council would like to sign on, and I have Counselor Rosetti. I'm muted, Counselor Rosetti.
There I am. Thank you, sir. Through you to Counselor Strezzo, I just wanted to let you know that for the last number of years, we have made this request on budget, and for the last number of years, we haven't received that ability to be able to do so. Just today, I actually had a meltdown in speaking with staff over matters in confirmation of appointments, and I stressed the example of my wanting to have my own counsel, and it was no disrespect to our current legal department. They're very good lawyers, but there are times when we truly do need our own. So, you know, this is, this is a repetitive conversation, but I'm happy to sign on once again. Thank you.
Counselor Davis, do you have a comment still?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of brief points. I was going to hold, but I, I don't feel like I, a couple of things I don't want to leave, as I said. First, I disagree that the budget for this should come from the money allocated to the city council to develop a citizen, a police oversight process, that $250,000 was specifically agreed for that purpose generally. And while I think the city, city council has a significant legally, has a significant leeway as to how to use that, frankly, I don't think we should have to use it for, for outside counsel when outside counsel is clearly warranted, which in this case, I believe it clearly is. And, and just to your point, I don't believe, it's not my understanding or belief that this, that the mayor has to approve our use of that money. What the mayor, the position the mayor has taken in the past as it relates to outside counsel for city council, when the city council properly enacted a legal, its legal right under city ordinance, signed by the mayor at the time to engage outside counsel, the city mayor simply said, well, I'm not going to sign a contract with the mayor, with a lawyer, and I'm the only one that's allowed to sign a contract. So therefore, even though we have a law that says you can do something, I'm going to subvert the rule of law by just refusing to sign a piece of paper with that outside order and effectively, you know, took that position. So that's the, the mayor has to agree issue and, and that we've run into in the past. I don't want there to be, I would prefer there not to be anything on the record that suggests that this council agrees that the mayor has to approve any use of the, the budget that is already allocated to the city council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that clarification, and I hope we can all start a hashtag of, hashtag charter reform, because this is a very big issue, and it's one that doesn't impact just the city. It's a statewide issue. Every city government in this Commonwealth has this issue, where they have to share a lawyer with some person that they're sometimes opposed to. So is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, Counselor Scott, did you want this to go to a committee, or can this just get approved?
Yeah, it can just be approved. I think we know where they'll file it. It's circular, but I would like it to be approved. And if there can be any follow-up, Mr. President, I appreciate your advocacy on this point.
All right. This item is laid on the table for approval, and Counselor Niedergang asked where he can find my column. It's in the Somerville Times and the Somerville News Weekly. It was too long for the Somerville Journal, unfortunately. Are there any further items before us, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, there are no further items before the council this evening.
All right, well, we have at least 10 minutes before nine o'clock. I feel like we should at least stick around till nine, right? No, no, just, okay. See, no, no items before us. Counselor Strezzo moves to adjourn.
Mr. President.
I've got to do, we're going to take all those items off the table and do a roll call vote to approve them. Thank you.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the motion to approve items three through five, seven, nine, 10, 27, 28, 32 through 36, and late items that have been submitted by Counselor Strezzo, Klingon, Davis, and Scott. In addition, placing items six, 24 to 26, 29 to 31, and item 38 on file. On that motion, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campton.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 counselors have voted in favor of that motion. It has been approved.
All right, now Counselor Strezzo moves to adjourn. Please call a roll call vote on adjournment.
On adjournment, Mr. President, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campton.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven counselors have voted in favor of adjournment.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Have a good night.